Councilmember Winn?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rosen?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. We had closed session, two items, there's no reportable action that was taken. We'll have the invocation by Les Jones, Assistant City Manager, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Winn.
Dear Lord, we ask for your presence in these proceedings. May your hand guide the decisions made here this evening for the benefit of all. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of the council and staff. My name is Christopher Townsend, President of Townsend Public Affairs, Inc., and we're here tonight to provide a very brief presentation on the update of our activities as this fiscal year draws to a close. And I'm pleased to report that your patience with us, I think, was well-founded. I will allow Jessica O'Hare, who's a new member of our team, but probably familiar to many of you, if you've felt you've noticed a diminution in the level of staff service at the Fifth Floor at the county, and partially to blame because I think I stole their best person, Jessica, about six months ago. Real, a real go-getter, does a great job, has been part of our team, along with Sean Fitzgerald and Heather Dion, who you both know. I let Sean take vacation this week, so he sends his regards as well. But I would like to ask Jessica to step forward and just give a real brief presentation, an update on some of the activities, successes to date, and what we're quickly looking ahead to the next fiscal year. So without any other questions, I'll turn it over to Jessica, and I'll be available to answer any other questions afterwards.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Pleased to be able to provide an update on the work that we've been doing over the past year. We'll start off with the funding awards that have been received, that we've been working with city, with council and staff on for the past year. There's been eight-hundred-eighty-one thousand, over eight-hundred-eighty-one thousand dollars in awards received. The first being from the CalGrip funds, and as you know, Garden Grove was one of only two cities in Orange County to receive funding from the CalGrip program for gang prevention activities within the city. And that was for two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Also, recipients, there was announced recently of the State Safe Routes to Schools Program administered by Caltrans for the new traffic signals near Sunnyside, Lampson, Lawrence, and Post Elementary Schools, as well as Alameda's and Irvine Intermediate Schools for some, the additional traffic signals there. And there finally was a federal appropriation, the amount of ninety-four thousand dollars for the Automated Report Writing System, and there is also an additional request for fiscal year '09 for the remainder of that project, for the three-hundred-and-six thousand dollars needed to complete that. Also this year, we have brought a few members from the state administration down to meet with members of, members of the council and staff. We had Chris Westlake, the Deputy Director for Housing and Community Development Department, who is responsible for helping roll out the Proposition 1C Housing Funds, had him down to visit, as well as Paul Seave, who was here recently, the Gang Policy Director for Governor Schwarzenegger, who was here after your award of the CalGrip funding, and we were happy to assist staff in bringing those two members down. And finally, want to provide a brief update on the federal appropriations requests. The House Committee markup begins next week on the four requests that were submitted, the Belgrade Channel improvements for one million dollars that was submitted through Congressman Ed Royce, that is part of the, going through the EPA Fund through STAG, and also the Yakin- Newland Storm Drain through Congresswoman Sanchez. And I think Mayor Dalton will remember that in a meeting he, she mentioned this was going to be one of her top priorities in the district. And so this, along with the request for the Automated Report Writing System and the Harbor Boulevard Meeting and Street Improvements, have all, the members have demonstrated, have told us that they were going to be supportive of all of these requests, and we will be monitoring these through the markup period in the next coming weeks and keep you up to date as to how those are going, and any additional letters of support or phone calls, we may need some help from council and staff on it as well for those requests. As you know, it's been, it's going to be a tough year in terms of federal appropriations, but we're hopeful with the strong projects that have been put forth to, that hopefully they'll be able to receive funding. And finally, I wanted to conclude with some of the major initiatives we'll be looking at going forward for '08. We, again, have the federal appropriation requests we'll be working on, in addition to the Prop 84 funds. One of our staff members up in our Northern California office actually met with Cedric Mitchell from the Department of Parks and Recreation, and he, so the most recent update here is that hopefully they'll be releasing two-hundred of the four-hundred-million dollars in Prop 84 this year. Kind of the rough timeline is that they'll begin with some focus groups in fall of two thousand nine, or two thousand eight, and then following up with some public hearings in the beginning of two thousand nine, releasing applications in the March-April timeframe, and then there'll be about five to six months to complete those applications for the Prop 84 funding opportunities. They'll be working with you and with staff to get those potential projects all teed up so that we're ready when the applications will be submitted. And also there, the transportation funding opportunities we'll be looking at through both OCTA, the Proposition 1B funds, and the federal T reauthorization as well, which will be, that process has begun now with initial committee hearings, and will follow through most likely early next year as well. Also, with some of your different stormwater and water-type projects, we'll be looking at the federal WERTA bill, which is kind of the equivalent of the Safe-T bill on the water side, also through Proposition 1E, and some of the water opportunities there. In addition to, if a water bond does go forward in the next year, we'll be working to see, to tee up different projects for those opportunities. As you know, the state infrastructure bonds have been a little slow to roll out, so we'll continue to work with, with you and staff on the implementation and allocation of those funds, and making sure the guidelines are favorable to the projects that are of interest to the city. We'll continue to coordinate additional site visits, and as always, we'll be providing legislative analysis on both the federal and state bills that you're interested in, and continue to provide advocacy and grant support. And if you have any questions, be more than happy to-
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Rosen?
Well, just a comment. Before Jessica took her current position, she worked for Supervisor Chris Norby, and in that capacity, she was assigned to transportation and was very helpful to Garden Grove, working on OCTA matters with us. And I think she's a real addition to Townsend and Associates, and somebody that we'll be able to work with well. And she also not only knows the stuff she presented, but she's very good at the inside politics stuff, and has a real good intuition as to who to approach to get what in the political world, and that's also very helpful to us. So I'm glad to see you here, Jessica.
Thank you, and we're definitely looking forward to working on some of the transportation projects. I think that's my first love is that, so I look forward to working on those with the council and staff.
Well, thank you. We're glad you're on our side.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go to oral communications for the council and the agency. Russ McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor, staff, council members. My name is Russ McDonald. I've been in the county for over fifty years, and over twenty-five years here. And I'm here tonight to comment on the remarks made last council member, last city council meeting in regards to the grand jury report, okay? I can understand why Mr. Rosen, Dalton, and Jones were sitting there, not giving real good comments on the report. One of the things in it says that "Most of the city councils are reluctant to put the issue of fireworks sales through a citizen vote." Sounds like all three of you guys. "And have been equally reluctant to encourage a public display of fireworks." Some of the things that were not mentioned, I remember Mr. Rosen had mentioned about Buena Park going against their city council and voting, the people voted against it, and so they had to reinstate it. But he didn't mention the city of Costa Mesa, where the people voted against the ban, although it was just an advisory vote, the city council never went with it. So, I mean, it goes both ways. Other things not mentioned were, oh, he, once again, Mr. Rosen said the family settings on the fourth was not mentioned in that, okay? In other words, it was biased in that. Well, I think the reason why it was like that is the grand jury report was talking about the safety of the citizens of Garden Grove. And I think the safety, the houses, we don't have a good track record here. Houses burning down every Fourth of July, I mean, that ought to tell somebody something. And I just think that the safety comes first versus the having fun of families shooting off fireworks. They also didn't mention about, all the, the grand jury report mentioned about all the kids that were getting hurt and having to go to the emergency room. That was mentioned in the grand jury report, okay? Wasn't mentioned here. Let's see. Oh, this wasn't even mentioned here either. How many of you guys received money from the fireworks maker? That wasn't mentioned. I don't, I don't know. I, to me, if I received money from somebody, that would be like exempting myself from a vote because I live too close to a property that we're deciding, that you guys are deciding about. Well, if you take money from the guy, wouldn't you exempt yourself too? That's what I think. But anyway. Also, let's see. Oh, the thousand-dollar fine that keeps on getting mentioned. I haven't checked on it lately, but about a month ago, you guys only brought in eighty-three thousand. I don't know, that could have changed by now, but that's all you brought in, and that doesn't cover the hundred thousand that it cost for police and fire, according to the grand jury report, are the other monies for cleanup and that. So you're running a minus there, too. I, that's all I can remember for right now. But I, I mean, I just think that the people ought to get a hold of this, it's on the internet, ought to get a hold of this and read it and make a determination for themselves, you know, of what the report brings out, and I think they'd be surprised. One other, one other thing, let's see, I still got a green light. Last week, you guys were talking about the trash. I believe somebody had asked the city attorney about, did they break the contract, the trash guys? And it was said, it was determined it wasn't. But what about when they went on strike, and they didn't pick up trash for two weeks? Isn't that a break of the contract? I just think, and for such a long period of time, to have that contract, I mean, what, 2014? My God, I think it should be put out every four or five years or something, something that you guys could get more control over than is leverage in that. But thank you very much.
Thank you. David Vell.
Mayor, with city council members. Again, I'm here with to talk for our chapter. I'm the President of the Garden Grove Chapter of AARP, and we will meet again on Tuesday, next Tuesday, by the way, right over here in this building here. And again, I had to talk about the same thing, simply because I want to just mention just a little bit about public service. Public service is about helping people, particularly the young, elderly, disabled, weak, and meek. And our sixteen-member board consists of volunteers who are committed to this cause. And I know that all of us, at one time, were young, and now we're at the point that we're getting elderly, and believe it or not, a lot of our, a lot of our senior citizens really are hurting, and they are hurting on the, on the Fourth. And again, I had to say that I know that the rest of us aren't hurting like these people are, and we're lucky. But the thing is this, times can change. I want, I want to say that our chapter takes an active interest in issues that affect our community at all, at all levels, including city, county, state, and national. Although AARP is nonpartisan, we actively support issues important to our seniors. And we try to keep our senior citizens informed, and we try to keep them informed by having these meetings, and they attend our meetings. And there is a lot of information and misinformation that's out there, and we try, and I don't try to tell them how I feel. I tell them how I feel, but I don't expect them to believe everything I, that I'm telling them. I always tell them, check it out for yourself, check these things out, because I think that a lot of things need to be checked out. If they're not checked out, then you only have yourself to blame. You can't believe everything that everyone tells you, and this is why we have these things, and this is why on Tuesday, we're having, the President of the League of Women Voters is coming to talk to our group, and to give us a little bit of information on some of the issues that do come up. I wish to take this opportunity, however, to thank the garden, to thank the Orange County Grand Jury for the anatomy regarding the sale of Safe and Safe in Fireworks. It clearly expresses that they are obviously dangerous and that they should be banned. The grand jury is also made up, you know, of individuals that are, they volunteer, and they work hard, and they're educated, and they, they pick them. I mean, you volunteer for this, but you are actually picked, and you have to qualify. You just can't become a grand jury member. Our Garden Grove Chapter of AARP stands solidly with our fire chief, police chief, and the Orange County Grand Jury in banning the sale of fireworks because they are dangerous and should be left up to the professionals. And the thing is this, a lot of little young children are hurt, and this is, this is what we have found out. And, and of course, the elderly, the ones that are really hurt, are the ones that feel trapped in their house, where they feel like they're prisoners. They can't, they can't get out, all this noise is going out there. And they have animals, or sometimes that, or pets, whatever you want to call them, I call them pets, that get lost and everything because of these fireworks. And the thing, the problem that I see is, like I said before, in Garden Grove, it used to be that we didn't have, we didn't have a large population here. We didn't have this kind of problem. Now, with all of these other cities coming into Garden Grove, because they do allow fireworks here, this is, this creates a big problem. And I think this is the big problem, because these people come in here, and they break the rules, they break the laws and everything else, and this makes it very difficult. We are not judgmental. We work to keep our members informed by holding seminars, forums for those running for different offices, locals, county, state, and national. I do, I did want to say one thing before, because I see my light over here. I know that being here at this last city council meeting, that a few of the members in the audience, they got up and they walked out, and they stormed out here, and they said some, some very not-nice things. But at any rate, members of my chapter have asked me, why don't they let these people respond? Because this is why they got mad. These people get mad, not to them long, you know? This is the way it's run, and this is the way it is, and if we don't like what we have up there, it's up to you people to vote them out. I mean, we have elections, and we have elections for this reason. We have elections to put in the people that think like we think. If they don't think the way we think, and they don't want issues that we want, then thank you. Thank you very much.
You can finish your sentence. Go ahead.
Oh, I can finish my sentence. Okay. Okay. If, if people don't feel about the issues the same way you feel about the issues, and if you can't, and if this issue is more important to you than any of the other issues, then you have to vote on that issue. I mean, fireworks should not be the most important issue. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you. Rod Powell.
Thank you for letting me finish.
No problem.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rod Powell. I basically wanted to talk about the issue of fireworks. There's two issues I feel very strongly about. One of them is graffiti issue, but there isn't any controversy with that. I think I'm on the same side as everybody else. I don't like it. But with the fireworks, I don't know if I'm on the popular side, but I also don't like fireworks personally. I grew up close to Disneyland, and, you know, since I was a kid, you know, we used to watch the fireworks at Disneyland. It still kind of annoys me. I live over here, and I listen to the noise at nine-thirty every night. I lived at Valley View in Lampson, I could hear the noise at nine-thirty. On the Fourth of July, my wife and me suffer that night. We, we have to listen to that noise, and it just goes on and on and on, you know, past midnight. You know, late at night, I start getting perturbed, and I'll go outside. I live over a real quiet neighborhood, and there's, there's nobody right around. It's the, the noise carries a long way, you know? It's just, maybe two or three blocks over, but it feels like bombs going off. I read that report. I got on the Central Garden Grove Association site, and I'm just astounded that anyone, I'm assuming that you've read that report. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that you requested to respond to that. I don't see how anyone could read that report through all the way and not understand that this is ludicrous, that, that we are even discussing this issue of fireworks. It's not a good idea. Smoking in stores was a bad idea. Eventually, they got rid of it. Now they don't smoke anywhere, it seems like. You know, there's lots of things that eventually go away, and this will go away eventually, too. I don't understand why, in my city, that we're so stubborn to want to keep something going on that almost everyone south of Long Beach doesn't want to have, you know, doesn't, doesn't feel it should be going on. There's five cities south of Long Beach. San Diego County has no fireworks. I, you know, I, and the, if, when you read that article, and it talks about the nonprofits, it talks about the fireworks companies, and the money they spent, they spent two-hundred-thousand dollars when Buena Park voted, the council voted to get rid of the fireworks. It was the fireworks companies that inspired that whole thing to get the fireworks back. They spent two-hundred-thousand dollars at least, and to get those fireworks back. I looked at that report, I have it here, they had the fireworks companies making all the money, these nonprofits, you know, they come in to council meeting, and they put on a show. It said, "Most of those nonprofits are created by those fireworks companies." They do their 501(c)(3), they do everything for them. Not, not, most of them aren't even legitimate, as far as that report says. I don't understand, well, I guess I got a green light, I mean, I don't understand how anyone could read this, this report through. I thought about getting some people and coming down here and just reading the thing. I don't know if that's allowed or not, through, you know? I figured it'd take about a half an hour and get about six of us. I think people should, everyone should be aware of that. I don't think that everyone, enough people are aware of this report. I don't know how serious it's supposed to be taken by you guys. To me, it sounds like a pretty serious thing when a grand jury is recommending highly of the five cities to get rid of the fireworks for three years. I mean, to me, that sounds pretty serious. I hope that, I, I felt compelled to come down here and express how I felt, and hope that you guys take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Close oral communications, and we'll recess the council meeting and go to agency.
I'll close oral communications and we'll recess the council meeting and go to agency.
I'll move the balance a second.
Okay. Motion second call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Six H.
I'm going to excuse myself in this one.
What if I have questions for you?
Then those questions can be asked to staff.
Okay, this deals with the city attorney. The city attorney has asked for an increase in their hourly rate, and I don't have any objection to that. I think they've done a great job as city attorneys. I think Tom Nixon has done an excellent job as our city attorney. What I object to is the cost of living adjustment that's built in as an automatic feature. We had a lengthy public hearing at our last council meeting relating to trash rates and that contract had a built-in cost of living increase, and there was nothing the council could do about that increase, even though there were a number of protesters. I just don't think it's a good idea to build in automatic raises into our municipal contracts. I think if the council is going to vote to raise any rate, or if there's going to be an increase in rates, the council ought to have to vote on it. So I would approve all this, except I would take out the CPI increase.
Any other comments? I'd like to ask a question. Is this the same rate that they've been getting since 1992?
Yeah, the 160, the $160 is the same rate that they've been getting since 1992, and they're proposing to increase that to 185, which is well below the cost of living increase, if you were to add that together, year by year.
One of the options, if the CPI was applied from the date of the last contract to now, it would exceed the 185.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the firm was trying to be sensitive to that, but then proposed the CPI go forward from this point on. I guess in fairness, in trying to apply the CPI, if the CPI doesn't go forward, then perhaps the 185 should be adjusted upward to account for the true CPI between the time of the last contract and now. So it was an offer to sort of offset the full CPI between the last contract and now, so that number wouldn't be as high, be higher than 185 per hour.
You make it sound like they want to do us a favor by not forcing us to vote on increases and the increase is going to effect automatically. And I think councils ought to have to vote on rate increases, or any kind of increases. I mean, the state legislature does the same thing. They've voted themselves an automatic pay increase every two years, and then every two years, it comes out in the newspapers and some of them say, "Well, I'm not going to take the increase." They've basically ducked the obligation to have to vote on the increase. Now, this isn't for us. You know, the council hasn't had a pay increase since, I think, 1970 because the council doesn't want to vote to pay, to increase its own pay.
I was just for point of clarification, not necessarily.
That's fine. I would suggest we take this back, continue this for two weeks. If the law firm wants to request a different rate increase because they don't get a CPI increase, that's okay. I just don't like having those things built in.
Okay. And now, as for clarification, I'm not, you know, maybe I'll leave that up to the firm if they want to make a counterproposal based on that.
That would be my motion to postpone this for two weeks.
You need a vote on that?
Yeah, I'll second that, if that's a motion. And just out of curiosity, how do their proposed rates compare to what other cities do, and do other cities do a CPI adjustment? Off the top of my head, I would concur that a CPI increase is very useful in certain situations if you're dealing with contracts that are sensitive to the purchase of materials or something, or labor that could escalate in price over time. But I picture that professional services are probably not as price elastic relative to CPI. There's not necessarily a direct relation to CPI there.
Did you ever answer?
No, we don't have an answer relative to if other cities have.
By the time we come back, I'd be curious.
Let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
This is contract open ending, and I'm not seeing any conclusion to it. I mean, I realize that there should be something in it that says that it can be terminated a certain amount of days, so maybe it doesn't need to be, but...
I believe the city attorney serves at the will of the city council. I don't believe there's an end term to the agreement.
Okay.
Does the Stradling law firm have a CPI built into their contract?
I'm not certain about that. I can check. I do know that Stradling rates are significantly higher than even what's proposed.
I think we're getting a magnificent deal from these people, and I certainly don't want to tamper with that.
Are you making a substitute motion?
No, I'm not. I'm just talking to myself, but I, you know, I think, why don't we hold off two weeks, talk to Mr. Nixon, see what they want to do, see what their consideration is, and if they want to stand pat, I'm willing to vote it the way it is.
Okay, we'll come back in two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is regards to establishment of an underground utility district in the Hazard Avenue, Euclid Avenue area, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, the council is asked to consider holding a public hearing for underground utilities along Hazard Avenue at Euclid Street and to also adopt a resolution establishing an underground district. On May 27th, 2008, a resolution of necessity for this hazard district was adopted by council. The purpose of the underground utility district is to access Southern California Edison monies to underground six utility poles that will accommodate the widening of the northwest corner of Hazard and Euclid. Southern California Edison provides monies to cities to perform qualified undergrounding projects under the California Public Utilities Commission Rule 20A. SCE has estimated that it will allocate, and the project is estimated and it will allocate half a million dollars to fund the undergrounding. Rule 20 funds are collected from the ratepayers here in the city, and they are not city funds. Staff is available to answer any questions, and this concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Some of those pole service center in across the street, don't they?
Correct.
How are we going to deal with that?
The Edison is going to actually perform the design, and when it's undergrounded, those connections will still be maintained. There isn't any aerial connections that go across the street to those, there's some actual residents on the other side, and it'll all be incorporated in the design.
You said that the funds are collected from the ratepayers.
It's in the bill.
Do they have a formula, a percentage, or?
Yeah, that's provided by the California Public Utilities Commission.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, hurry and then I'll close the public hearing. Yes, Ms. Wim.
How long would this project take? It should be done by December 28th, I see that, but when would it start?
That is, once we establish the underground district, the design and the construction will be more or less in the hands of Edison, and we are hoping to get this done within a year. However, that'll be an accelerated schedule for Edison. It can take two years.
So the traffic in that area would be affected?
No, well, yes, in terms of the construction activity, it'll be affected, but it's not going to be a daily, you know, nuisance, so to speak. And one of the things that we have to realize is we're going to be widening the street, so a lot of the work is going to be back behind the future curb and gutter, which will be out of the travel lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
I have motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Seven B.
Mr. Mayor, seven B is a public hearing to consider several actions involving the city's home monies, this is housing monies from the federal government, and I'd like Allison Mills to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Item that you have before you is a public hearing for substantial amendment number one to the 2007-2008 action plan for the use of HUD funds, and a CHODO reservation agreement and a CHODO operating expenses agreement. There are two factors that necessitate the proposed substantial amendment. Number one, HUD rules require that all program income be expended prior to the expenditure of entitlement funds. And number two, our citizen participation plan requires that any budget change in excess of 30% of the entitlement award will trigger the process for a substantial amendment to allow for public participation. Earlier in the program year, an existing loan with a balance of just over $500,000 was repaid to the city. The amount of the program income received is in excess of the 30% of our home entitlement grant. The proposed amendment is to allocate this home program income to the multifamily housing acquisition rehab program. In order to allocate and eventually expend those funds, we must engage in the process for a substantial amendment and provide an opportunity for public participation. The public comment period began on May 2nd and will continue until the conclusion of the public hearing tonight. Thus far, no comments have been received. On June 2nd, the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission held a public hearing for substantial amendment number one and unanimously recommended its transmission to the city council. Tonight, you are asked to conduct a public hearing and accept public comment regarding the proposed substantial amendment and approve the substantial amendment. Secondly, you are asked to approve the CHODO reservation agreement and CHODO operating expenses agreement with Jamboree Housing. Home Investment Partnership Act final rule requires that a minimum of 15% of our home annual allocation be reserved for investment in housing developed, sponsored, or owned by a CHODO. A CHODO is defined as a nonprofit organization committed to providing low-income, affordable housing with a governing board that includes low-income representation. Further, all home funds must be committed within 24 months of the grants agreement with HUD, or those uncommitted funds are susceptible to recapture by HUD and the city's home grant reduced proportionally. The CHODO reservation agreement you have before you proposes to allocate a total of $1,667,711 in home funds to Jamboree Housing to acquire and rehabilitate substandard rental properties. The proposed funds will serve as gap financing once a project is determined. The reservation agreement is the mechanism to commit home funds and preserve the funding from de-obligation by HUD. The CHODO operating agreement will provide funds to reimburse Jamboree Housing for eligible expenses incurred in identifying an acceptable site for a future affordable housing project. Once a site is selected, an affordable housing agreement will be brought to council for approval. It is requested that council conduct a public hearing for substantial amendment number one, approve substantial amendment number one at the close of the public hearing, approve the CHODO reservation agreement and CHODO operating expense agreement between the city and Jamboree Housing, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute all agreements and documents necessary to implement the agreements. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. And John Okura from Jamboree Housing is here as well and also available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Is there any particular site or project that's been identified at this point?
We have not identified a site.
Is this restricted just to new development, or it could be an acquisition and rehab type? What do you envision in terms of the?
It would be acquisition and rehab of...
An existing apartment building or something?
Yes.
In the past, we've identified what we've called focus multifamily neighborhoods, Buena Clinton, Stewart Drive, those types of neighborhoods where we've used Jamboree and other chuck-fry entities to go in and buy properties that need rehab and go and rehab them and then put affordability covenants on them.
How did this become exclusive to Jamboree, as opposed to anybody else?
The qualifications to be a, determined to be a CHODO are quite stringent, and there's not many, particularly that where your board is made up of also low-income residents. So although there are some nonprofit housing organizations, not all of them fit the CHODO requirement, and Jamboree happens to be one, and they've done projects in Garden Grove and...
But it's typical of the process that you team up with one specific one and...
Well, HUD, well, there's not a lot out there. I mean, if there were more, we, credible that we might, but there, we've had difficulty identifying CHODOs.
Sorry. Additionally, Jamboree Housing submitted a proposal to partner with us.
But the success that we've had with them in the past gives us a lot of comfort that they'll continue to do a good job for us.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Wim.
The current amount budgeted is $1.2 million. When was that budgeted?
That was budgeted as part of the 2007-2008 action plan. That would have been back in, hmm, probably May of last year.
And why do we have a $500,000 increase in that?
Earlier in the program year, an existing home-funded loan was repaid to the city. So the $500,000 in program income that we received is the difference between the two amounts that you see there.
So we're required to use that amount?
HUD rules require that all program income be expended prior to expending the new entitlement money. So we have to accommodate for that $500,000 that we received as program income. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here? Charles Mitchell.
I have a couple of questions in regarding this amendment, and one of the things that I'm concerned about is that this is going to help fund lower-income families in providing some kind of housing for them. Now, I wonder if there is any provision here to make sure that the people who apply for this are actually below a specific limit in their income, because unfortunately, there's a lot of situations where people apply for these in somewhat of a fraudulent manner, and they get these special bonuses and special deals to purchase, and it turns out later that their income has been somewhat hidden. And I wonder what steps are being taken to make sure that these people are truly qualified.
Okay, go ahead. I'll let you respond to that.
All applicants are income-qualified by the property manager, property owner, and then those records are monitored by staff to just provide like a second layer of verification.
Do they require income tax returns, records of all that to have to be submitted to substantiate?
Indeed, they do.
Okay. Anyone else? Peggy Bergen.
Just a couple of little questions. Would these be houses and places that people buy, or are they going to be rental units that somebody else owns and are rented? And what is considered low-income or affordable housing? Because I haven't seen any either rental that I would, I would myself rent or buy... Because I haven't seen any either rental that I would, I would myself rent or buy at a reduced rate that I would want to move into. So I mean, I'm kind of curious, what is the rate of what they consider affordable housing? And are these going to be rental units? Or my, could I buy it, let us say, if my income was substantially low enough? And then could I, how long do I have to live there being given a kind of a bonus to buy it because I don't have the money to afford regular housing? How long would I have to live there before I could turn around and sell it for whatever the going rate was? Or would I have to resell it to someone that was considered low-income? Thank you.
Thank you.
The product, or the agreement that's proposed would be for Jamboree Housing to acquire and rehabilitate existing substandard rental units. So it would not be an ownership product for the community, it would be rental housing. And as far as the income limits, it's established by HUD. The income limits and the rent limits are also established by HUD.
Thank you, Allison. Gentlemen, did you want to?
I don't know if you want further clarification with respect to the program.
No, no, that's fine, thank you. Okay.
Well, let me follow through on that. Is there an option under this program to take the money and put it with somebody who would sell units as opposed to rent them out?
This agreement is to acquire and rehab rental properties as proposed.
Under HUD rules, if we were to find a different participant who would be willing to fix up units and then sell them, is that an option under the HUD program?
That would be an option as long as we partnered with a certified community housing development organization, a CHODO.
Well, one of the reasons why we have focused on rentals, apartments, is because we have issues within those neighborhoods, and this is an effective way to deal with that. On a for-sale, the amount of city assistance to make a for-sale unit affordable gets into the, now in today's market, several hundred thousands of dollars per unit. Versus on a rental, we can get many more units for that same dollar amount. So it's not cost-effective to try to do for-sale affordable units at this time. And that's why a lot of our efforts have been in the, in the multifamily. One, that's, we have issues there, and we get a much greater bang for our buck assisting rentals than trying to assist for sale.
David?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you still got a public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Go finish your public hearing.
Go ahead, David. I think he's the last one.
I, I just want to bring this up, it's, it's kind of ambiguous, you know? What do you mean by affordable? I'd, I'd like to have a dollar, I think that that's what was brought up a little bit earlier, and I don't believe that that was answered. What, what do you consider affordable?
Well, there's, there's different charts to use, but generally, in the federal program, I think it's eighty percent of the median income would be one of the criteria. And then you would set a rental amount based on what somebody earning eighty percent of the median income could afford for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom, also based on the size of the household. So if it's a two-person household, it's one level. If it's a four-person household, it's another level. But usually for the federal programs, it's eighty percent of the median income and a rent factor based on that. But there's various combinations, so there's...
And it's a hard question to answer, basically because HUD sets up the rules, we don't set them up. HUD is, the federal government's in total control of the rules, so we don't really have it.
All right, let me close your public hearing. Now, go ahead if you had a comment.
Well, my comment is, is this really gives us a great way of cleaning up our own neighborhoods, of cleaning up neighborhoods that are going downhill. Lets us move in and, and make them work right and still keep them at low-income housing. And it's a, I mean, it's a golden opportunity, it's not something we want to walk away from.
Yeah, it, I, I agree with Constable and Broadwater. You know, there are several areas in the city that have been used that have really changed from terrible, rundown, overcrowded, infested places. They have been rehabbed to where they're livable and people can have a good, decent quality of life in there. And it, and it brings up the rest of the neighborhood and everything, too. Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve. I think Hester Gardens is an example that is just fantastic on this issue.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, Mr. Fratell, see, the next item?
Seven C.
Yeah, your next couple of public hearings, seven C and seven D are related to amendments to the municipal code relative to some development standards for residential development. And I'd like Susan Emery to introduce this item before we go to the staff reports.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Before Maria Para provides your staff report this evening, I would like to give some introductory comments about this code amendment and the one that's going to follow immediately after. As you can see, both amendments address development issues. The first relates to the construction of duplexes and triplexes, and the second relates to small lot subdivisions. Due to changing conditions in the development world, we are seeing new product types come about that were not anticipated back in the early 1990s when the zoning code was last substantially amended. There has been an increased demand for new development types that offer living situations that somewhat resemble a traditional single-family home in terms of size and layout, and yet are on much smaller lots and may not offer ownership opportunities as in the past. Perhaps fifteen years ago, these projects would have been developed as apartments or condominiums and would resemble more traditional land uses. But with the advent of construction defect litigation and the changing family demographics, the new products that incorporate larger, larger living spaces on smaller lots have become more desirable. Yet, as desirable as this product type is, whether constructed as a duplex, triplex, or a small lot subdivision, our code did not anticipate or plan for them in terms of providing development standards. Without these standards in place, the developers are not always given the best set of guidelines about how they should proceed with their project. On a case-by-case basis, staff works with each applicant to try and create the best possible project to present to the planning commissioner or the city council. However, by adopting the standards which are presented to you tonight, we believe that we will be providing developers with a good set of guidelines for new construction. And we will retain the ability to be flexible in that developers will still have options as they did in the past, whether they want to meet traditional zoning codes, those advocated by the R1 or R2 development standards, or they may still request a PUD as they have in the past. And with that, I would like Maria Para to present her staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Before you tonight is a request to approve amendment number A13608, which is an amendment to Title IX of the municipal code to develop development standards for duplexes and triplexes. The city is proposing this amendment to accommodate an increased interest from property owners to develop duplexes and triplexes on R2 and R3 zone properties. Staff has determined that there is a need to establish standards to assist in the development of duplexes and triplexes since the current code does not provide standard to facilitate the development of these projects. The current multiple-family code is designed to address the issues that affect larger multiple-family projects as it relates to setbacks, parking, and circulation. Duplexes and triplexes are unique from the larger multiple-family projects and require development standards that are designed to address the issues that affect these projects since these projects are smaller in scale and are developed on lots smaller than the larger multiple-family projects. In evaluating the duplexes and triplexes that have been approved by the city, staff has observed that these projects provide several important benefits to the city. First, duplexes and triplexes provide a good transitional use in older multiple-family neighborhoods that are developed with both single-family and multiple-family residences. These projects provide an intermediate use that are compatible with existing developments found in those areas. Second, duplexes and triplexes encourage the recycling of lender-utilized or blighted properties by improving the appearance of the property through the construction of new dwelling units and landscaping. And third, duplexes and triplexes create new housing opportunities that help fulfill the goals of the city's housing element. The next slide is an example of a before-and-after photograph of a property that was developed with a duplex, and it illustrates how the improvements helped to enhance the appearance of the property. In this instance, the single-family home was demolished and replaced with a new duplex that provided articulated elevations, landscaping, and decorative paving that enhanced the appearance of the property. Similar to other duplexes and triplexes, this property is located in a multiple-family area that is improved with single-family and multiple-family projects. In order to facilitate the development of duplexes and triplexes, the proposed amendment will establish a new code section, section 9.16.065, which will create special requirements. These standards will establish new setbacks, parking, and driveway standards, and also encourage appropriate building design and massing. Duplexes and triplexes will be continued to be permitted in the R2 and R3 zones. The number of units allowed in each lot will be determined by the size of the lot and by the zone. The table below illustrates the minimum lot size for each, for the minimum lot size per zone and indicates the number of units per that lot size. The proposed regulations will establish new setbacks, which are a hybrid between the existing single-family and the multiple-family regulations. And these setbacks are consistent with, with surrounding cities for similar projects. The front setback will be established at 20 feet, which is a standard number currently used by the single-family and the multiple-family regulations. The proposed regulations will establish different side and rear setbacks for the first and second floor. The first floor side setback would be established at five feet, the second floor at 10 feet, the rear first floor setback would be 10 feet, and the second floor would be 15. The purpose of establishing second floor setbacks which are greater than the first floor is to preserve the privacy of the adjacent neighbors. The proposed regulations will establish parking and circulation requirements that will improve the design of the duplexes and triplexes. The required number of parking spaces will continue to be regulated by the multiple-family parking requirements. The proposed code will require each unit to provide two parking spaces within an enclosed garage. The proposed regulations will allow guest parking spaces to be designed in front of the enclosed garage, provided that the guest parking spaces do not encroach into the driveway or block access to the other unit. The proposed regulations will allow for flexible driveways. The standard driveway would be established at 25 feet. Projects that have a narrow lot similar to the illustration or projects that are located along a major arterial will require 25-foot driveway to accommodate backup and turnaround areas. The regulations will also include a provision that would allow the driveway to be reduced to 20 feet if the city determines that the design of the project and the location of the property will benefit from a reduced driveway width. The regulations will emphasize appropriate building design and massing in an effort to provide for attractive and articulated elevations. The regulations will require that all elevations be articulated to the fullest and will require the varying roofline, building massing, and building projections be incorporated in order to minimize the appearance of a flat, bulky, box-shaped design. The photograph is an example of a duplex that was approved by the city, and it illustrates the type of design that we want to encourage. So it has varying rooflines, detail, decorative trim, columns, and this is what we want to encourage future developments. Other requirements, we are going to limit the height of the building to two stories, 35 feet, limit the number of bedrooms to four bedrooms, the lock coverage will remain the same at 50%, and require a private recreation area for each unit of 225 square feet. As part of this code amendment, section 9.0.030 of the land use matrix will be amended to create a separate use category for duplexes and triplexes. Staff is also recommending an amendment to the procedures and hearings, staff is also recommending an amendment to the procedure and hearing section of the code to allow duplexes and triplexes that comply with the development standards to be processed through a director's review. The current code requires all multiple-family projects to be approved through, through a cycle review. The director's review process will improve customer service by expediting the processing time for all duplexes and triplexes that comply with the code. The director's review process will only be allowed if the project complies with all the development standards. The adjacent property owners will be notified, notified and given a 10-day period to provide comments to the city. And the community development department director will approve the request. In addition, a new, a new director's review fee is proposed. The fee will be $1,600 and is comparable with the fees charged by surrounding cities for a similar project. The director review process is, is essential in improving customer service since duplexes and triplexes that comply with the code will be reviewed and approved in a shorter period of time. In summary, the amendment will establish new regulations for duplexes and triplexes and will provide consistency between the projects, improve the quality of design of each project, and promote the goals of the general plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt a negative declaration, introduce the attached ordinance for first reading approving amendment number A13608, and adopt the attached resolution establishing a new director's review fee for duplexes and triplexes. This concludes my presentation, I could answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here? Charles Mitchell?
Good evening again. The idea of dividing properties into duplexes and triplexes is a necessity given the current situation with the amount of property available in our city and the number of people moving in. There are several issues, though, relating to infrastructure. Now, if you have a single-family residence on a property, you have a certain impact on the sewer system, you have an impact on traffic. And my concern is that once these projects are developed and we have these duplexes and triplexes, that we may have a situation where we have more than a single family living in one of these new buildings. And I wonder if there's anything in the regulations proposed that is going to be enforceable as far as limiting the capacity of one of these residences to a single family? Because unfortunately, there are many places in our city where there are multiple families living in a very small space. And I think it needs to be looked at from both the infrastructure and the safety side. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Peggy Bergen?
Well, actually, I'm not really against this, so therefore you can be happy. I do have the one comment that most of the units that come in like this that are taking one house off and putting multiple units on have to go through either the planning or the city council. And my only question is, once again, you're still taking out one house and you're putting in multiple units. And according to you, our new owners are going to learn to only park in their garage, and their visitors, two at a time, will only park in their driveways. But what happens when it's Sunday football and we have six friends come over to watch football? Where are the other four cars going to park? But other than that, I think from listening to what they had to say, the size of the lots that are going to be allowed for duplexes and triplexes are no smaller than some of the units that have been coming through on PUDs and those type of things. So therefore, we're not really going to be putting that much more building on our land. We're just going to be, once again, using up a lot of the parking that was never anticipated, and therefore it makes it very difficult for the residents that actually live in the surrounding properties, not in these specific properties. But the size lots, and I do think they, they did allow for a teeny-weenie-weenie bit of green space around these properties. And are these going to be for-sale units similar to condominiums, or will they be rental units? Like I, I have one of these built on a piece of property and I rent it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. I guess in response to a couple of those things, I'm not sure that there's a limitation you can put on a number of people living in a unit. I know that Santa Ana had looked at that several years ago, and the courts, they came back with a very high number of people that could live in a one-bedroom apartment... back with a very high number of people that could live in a one-bedroom apartment. I mean, it was something that would be probably uncomfortable for most of us. And as far as building a duplex or a triplex, I imagine if you're building it, you could either have it for yourself or use them as rentals. Okay. Any comments? Mr. Rosen.
Well, two things. First, on this item and the item to follow, I think Susan has done a good job of looking at what has been taking place in the city the last several years, and we've been using the public unit or planned unit development kind of on an ad hoc basis, and this helps to codify it, to make our laws consistent with what's really going on there. So I salute that effort from you and you too, Carl. With regard to the ordinance on page 13, the very last page, I guess it starts at the bottom of page 12E, notice and review. This talks about the director's review, and then it says the decision of the department director shall be filed or banished unless an appeal is filed within seven days from the date of the decision, or the application is called up for review by any member of the planning commission. And then it says any decision of the department director can be appealed to the planning commission. My view has always been that any decision, land use decision ultimately should be subject to city council review. So I would amend Part 5, that to add, unless the application is called up for review by any member of the planning commission or city council, in Part 6, there ought to be something, maybe a Part 7 added that says any decision of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council.
Mr. Rosen, what page are you on?
Page 13 of the ordinance. It's the very last page.
On 7B?
Sure. It's...
Jump ahead.
7B or 7C?
No, it's E. Section 2E.
Item 7C.
Yeah, item 7C.
I got it here.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any, yes?
Yes, on the same item, item 5, I want to give them 10 days from the date of the decision instead of seven days. Same item, item 5, it says they have a right to appeal within seven days. I want to make it 10 days because sometimes people are doing this on their own without any professional help, and, you know, they'll need time to figure out things.
Okay. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just a couple of comments to clarify a few things that came up. This particular item just serves to kind of hone in on a clarified development standards or establish clear, clearly articulated development standards for duplexes and triplexes. This only affects properties that are either already in R2 or R3 zoning, so it's not to say that you can just go to any R1 single-family house and make it a duplex now, so to clarify that if there's any confusion. And second of all, this notwithstanding, any project that goes forward like this requires the applicant to do a sewer study to make sure there's sewer capacity before anything can be built, requires traffic studies and those sort of things to do to make sure that all those items are addressed. So this just has to do with kind of the icing part of the thing, how it looks and feels and the setbacks and the parking requirements, that sort of thing, just to standardize that. But it doesn't take away from the fact that developers will still need to do, meet all the parking standards. Another comment to parking standards was, city reviewed and actually made our parking standards more onerous about a year or so ago. That process was done with a great degree of detail in looking at projects, categorizing them by smaller projects versus larger projects and yada, yada, yada. And so smaller projects, less than 50 units, are subject to higher parking standards now. Kind of a thought process, I think, that larger projects, there's a little more float room in terms of the guest parking that gets utilized or whatnot, and this was based on actual studies that were done of all kinds of projects around the county, I guess. But anyway, so all that stuff is still in there, open space requirements, parking requirements for small project standards, and the, all the infrastructure-related impacts, that stuff's all still built in.
Yes, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes, I have one more question. If we leave number 6 the way it is, the appeal going through the planning commission, would that decision from the planning commission be final or would the parties get a chance to go to the city council if they weren't happy with the planning commission's decision?
Our current code allows any planning commission decision is appealable to the city council, so that doesn't change, although we could state it again, but, so it's fine either way.
Well, I prefer we state it again because you have people who look through the code who only go to that section, and they should be able to see right there that there's an appeal to the council.
Right. But just for clarification, the code already allows for that, but we'll restate it, so it's clear.
We could even say there can be an appeal to the council, consistent with section whatever that already allows an appeal to the council.
Okay. If no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt the negative declaration, introduce the attached ordinance for first reading approving amendment number 136A13608 with the amendments that Councilmember Nguyen stated to allow an appeal within 10 days, that the application can be called up for review by any member of the planning commission or city council, and an express statement that any decision of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council, and adopt the resolution establishing a new development processing fee for director's review duplex and triplex.
Did that cover it all? Okay, motion, a sec?
Yeah, let me read the title, please.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's an ordinance of the city council, City of Garden Grove, adopting a negative declaration and approving code amendment number A-136-08, an amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to establish development standards for the development of residential duplexes and triplexes.
Second. Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7D.
Mr. Mayor, you have a companion item, 7D, and this has to do with small lot subdivisions, and Grant is here to make the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This is a proposed amendment to Title IX of the municipal code to establish development standards for the small lot subdivisions and permits, permit them with special standards in R2 and R3 zones. On May 1, 2008, the planning commission recommended adoption of a negative declaration and recommended approval of the code amendment number A13808. Currently, small lot subdivisions are entitled under the PUD process and have no development standards except for a three-acre minimum. While this does allow for some flexibility, there are no certainties for developers that their project will be entitled. Furthermore, the projects proposed in the city are often under three-acre, the three-acre minimum. This requires them to go through the extra step of obtaining a variance. In fact, since 1998, 11 of the 18 approved small lot subdivision projects have been under three acres. Oh, I apologize, I'm not advancing my slides. Standards will give developers a guide to the type of projects the city would like to see and are based on past developments within Garden Grove. Standards will also ensure consistency throughout small lot subdivisions in Garden Grove with more uniform separations and setbacks. The proposed standards permit small lot subdivisions with special standards in R2 and R3 zones with a minimum lot size of one acre. They will require fewer variances and zone changes and make it easier for developers. Small lot subdivisions could still be developed in R1 zones but would require the project to go through the PUD process. This will maintain the integrity of R1 neighborhoods and treat them on a case-by-case basis. The proposed setbacks vary depending on the use of adjacent lots, whether the development is along an arterial collector street, or whether the streets within the small lot subdivision are public or private. The purpose behind these variable setbacks are to protect the privacy of existing residents as well as the privacy of incoming dwellings and to keep the integrity of existing neighborhoods intact. Small lot subdivisions with 10 or more units shall provide 200 square feet per unit of common recreation area for its residents. Streets and parking are also addressed to ensure the adequate space for flow of traffic and guest parking. Sidewalks are addressed to help with pedestrian safety. To give an overview of what the proposed standards are and how they will impact the density and square footage of an entitled project, staff developed a model small lot subdivision based off an already entitled project. The original project was approved by council in 2007. It has eight units on one acre and is adjacent to a secondary arterial and surrounded by R1 and R2 lots. Using the proposed standards and treating the subdivisions as if it was surrounded by, completely by R1, thus using the most restrictive of the proposed standards, the same number of units were able to fit on the site with approximately slightly more square footages than the original units. Comparing the original project to the proposed standards, the original perimeter setback along the arterial was 15 feet 9 inches to the dwelling unit, with the development wall 5 feet off the property line. With the proposed standards, the setback is 20 feet to the dwelling unit, with the development perimeter wall 10 feet off the property line. Here we have an example of a small lot subdivision within Garden Grove that maintains a perimeter setback that meets the proposed standards. The original front setbacks for the units along a private road were 19 feet to the garage and 16 feet to the dwelling unit. The proposed front setbacks along a private road are 19 feet to the garage, which allows guest parking in the driveway, and 10 feet to the unit, which is less restrictive than the original entitled project. This varying front setback allows for a more diverse streetscape within the development. And here's an example of a small lot subdivision in Garden Grove that maintains this varying setback between garage and dwelling unit. Moving on to the rear yard setback, the original rear yard was 20 feet, and we've maintained that for the proposed standards. Here we have an example, again, of a small lot subdivision that meets these proposed standards. Excuse me. As for side yards, the original side yards were setbacks, were 5 feet on each side for a total of 10 feet between units. The proposed side yard setbacks were 4 feet on each side for a total of 8 feet between units. This proposed standard includes privacy provisions that call for floor plans to take privacy concerns of adjacent properties into consideration, addressing window positions and orientation of adjacent residents' private recreation areas. To give a better visual example of the small lot subdivisions, staff developed a model fly-through. If we can. This will give you a good idea as to different angles of the side yard setback to the arterial, rear yard setback adjacent to R1, and differing views of front yard setbacks between garages and dwelling unit. It also gives you a concept of the parking that will be available. Here we'll get a more foreview and a side view between two units within the development. Once again, the proposed standards are based off the past small lot subdivisions in Garden Grove and are meant to give developers a clear guide to what types of projects for which the city is looking. The proposed standards take into account developments related to surrounding uses, residents' privacy, parking and recreation space. The planning commission recommends the city council adopt a negative declaration and introduce ordinance for the first reading approving amendment number A13808. This concludes staff's comments, and staff is available for answers to questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay. Question, Mr. Jones?
Yes. The, just regarding setbacks, it looks like, kind of creatively, we're encouraging you could go up to as low as a 10-foot setback in the front for the house portion, as long as the garage's sort of setback, which allows a little more space in the front but also kind of articulates space. I think that's cool. The rear yard setback, was that not increased from 15 to 20 feet? Or isn't standard 15 feet for a rear setback?
That was based off a setback next to an R1. The original development had 20 feet, and next to an R1, it is 20 feet, but if it was next to an R2 or any other zoned lot, it would be reduced to 15 feet. So it varies depending upon its neighboring use, so it was meant to protect the privacy of R1 lots and neighboring.
So currently, in just our straight standard R1, it's a 20-foot setback is the requirement for rear if it's adjacent to.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
So is the proposed now a setback of 20?
20 if it's... It's 20 if it's adjacent to an R1 and 15 if it's adjacent to an R2.
What was it before?
We actually didn't have standards. That's kind of the purpose of this. Every PUD was unique, so we kind of went off of the R1 and the R2 standards of 15 or 20. We tried to emulate that, but this would actually formalize it.
Okay.
Why is this one being approached differently than the duplex-triplex thing we just saw in terms of, you know, first story versus second story setbacks relative to their distancing? Like, why would there not be allowed, say, a 15-foot for one story, but if you get to a second story, then it's 20 feet or something, for example?
No, it's because they're in the multi-family zones. Yeah, I think it's because the duplexes are in the multi-family zones, so you would have that 15-foot, but the small lot subdivisions could be in the R1 zones.
Do we not have a number of these type of projects that have lesser than 20-foot rear yard setbacks?
They, there may be small lot subdivisions that have less than that because we didn't have standards. What we were trying to do is come up with something that was consistent.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Nguyen.
Yeah, my question is, this will have less PUD, you anticipate less PUD and variances from changing this?
Correct.
Is what it is. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone here who would like to speak on this? I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
A second.
If I could read the title, please. It's an ordinance of the city council, City of Garden Grove, adopting a negative declaration and approving code amendment number A-138-08, an amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to establish development standards for the development of small lot subdivisions.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, item 9A is an adoption of the Measure M seven-year capital improvement program, and I'd like Bill Murray to give a brief staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. On average, the city receives around $5 million per year from OCTA as a result of Measure M. Those funds are divided into turnback and competitive monies. The turnback funding is guaranteed money and totals about $2 million a year. The city is required to submit documentation to the OCTA verifying compliance with Measure M provisions on an annual basis. The documents included are include, but are not limited to, a capital improvement plan and a maintenance of effort statement. The maintenance of effort clause of Measure M demands that the city commit about $2.7 million of general fund monies per year to receive the Measure M funds. To date, the Measure M funding has provided the city with significant funding to widen intersections, repave roadways, improve traffic control systems, and even assist in the SR22 construction. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I'll entertain a motion.
I believe we approve.
Second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
9B?
Mr. Mayor, 9B is sort of a companion item to the Prop 1B funds that were approved earlier, and I'd like Bill Murray to give a brief description of this item.
Again, thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the City of Westminster has established an underground district along Bolsa Avenue within the Little Saigon Business District, and has requested the City of Garden Grove partner with them to perform the work. The entire project will toll...
The entire project will total eight-point-one million dollars. Garden Grove's portion will cost about half a million. This project is eligible for California Public Utilities Commission Rural Twenty-A monies through the Southern California Edison Company. Since Westminster is the lead agency and they have already adopted the resolution of necessity and conducted public hearings, the process for Garden Grove is simplified. The council is only required to approve the designation of Rural Twenty-A funds for use on the Westminster project. Should the council approve this Rural Twenty-A expense, staff will inform SCE and the project work can proceed. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you, any questions? Yeah, Bill, what's the length of our city limits on Westminster Boulevard there where this is being done?
Uh, this is actually down in Bolsa, and it's a few hundred feet, we're undergrounding four poles, that's it.
Yeah. So Westminster's doing the whole street, is that correct?
That's correct. They have a significant reach, it's close to two miles, I believe.
Okay. I'll move we approve.
A second.
Motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Nine C.
Mr. Mayor, nine C is a series of three actions, initiating proceedings to levy the two thousand eight, two thousand nine assessment for street lighting and park maintenance, and Bill Murray's here to give another report.
Again, thank you, Mr. Fratell, and Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The operation and maintenance of the streetlights in city parks in Garden Grove is paid for by three assessment districts. Two of those districts are for street lighting. The current process for levying the assessments involves adopting the following three resolutions. First is the initiation of the proceedings and requests for an engineer's report. The second is the adoption of the engineer's reports. The third is the adoption of the declarations of intention to levy the assessments. The process is executed with the series of resolutions for East District that's before you tonight. The assessments do not include any new or increased tax rates, although property changes such as divisions and consolidations have been accounted for. Should the council adopt the resolutions presented here tonight, the assessments for the, for the large streetlight district will total about one-point-three million, and for the park maintenance district, we will collect about six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. Public hearing on the assessment will be scheduled for July twenty-second, two thousand eight. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you, questions for staff? This is the first step, correct?
Correct.
I make a motion, we approve. Second? I have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
You've already done nine D.
It's done?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
As a reminder, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ordinance presented for second reading.
Yes, it's an ordinance of the City Council, City Garden Grove, adopting a negative declaration and approving code amendment number A-137-08, an amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to allow motorcycle sales in the M1 limited industrial zone with the approval of a conditional use permit.
Move approval. Second. Motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Broadwater.
Okay, I'm just glad to be back, I went on an extensive vacation and saw how the rest of the world was working, at least the western United States, and it's exciting to see how other cities do things, parks and lighting and things, and you probably don't notice that just being a everyday type of guy, but once you, once you're on the city council, you start noticing everything, I mean, one time I remember coming back from Newport Beach and, and all of a sudden, things changed on Harbor Boulevard, and one person says, you know, it's different here, and finally I said, that's because there's no telephone poles anymore. It does, and it's good to see cities clean themselves up and change things around. I had a great time and we put on, I figured with the price of gasoline going up, this would be my last road trip of my life, you know, so, five thousand some odd miles later, and the shame of it all was, the gasoline that was the highest was in Garden Grove. It's hard to believe, but even, I was in Bismarck, North Dakota, and they were trucking gasoline a long ways in there, and it was a lot cheaper than it was here. Anyway, I had a good time, and I'm sorry I missed a meeting, but sometimes you just have to do those things.
Mr. Rosen. Thank you. I just would like to say happy birthday to my daughter Rachel, who turns twenty-four in two days. That's it? Okay, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes. I'd like to thank the Garden Grove High School for inviting the council to a ceremony commemorating Michael Mansour and many of the Garden Grove High School alumnis who have died for, by serving this country, and there are some of them that dating back to the thirties. I didn't know Garden Grove High School was that old, but it was a very nice experience and touching experience. And I'd also like to ask the manager if the applications for first-time home buyers are online, and also some, the grant applications for nonprofit organizations, if those two are online, if they're not online, could we please place them online?
I'll check on that.
Okay. And I also want to congratulate my son for graduating high school in about a couple of days. The fun has just begun.
Mr. Jones.
Just a congratulation to Mr. Broadwater on his wedding anniversary, even though he forgot to congratulate me on mine, which is the day before his. And then also, happy birthday to my almost-two-year-old son, Jaden, this week.
Thank you.
What number was this for you, sir?
For three.
Number three, we got a ways to go, mine was thirty-seven, so.
Okay, one thing I want to report on is a Washington DC trip that we took May twentieth through twenty-second. The city delegation traveled to Washington DC to contact our elected officials, pardon me, and meet with key staff of the Congress regarding funding for transportation improvements to Harbor Boulevard and the upcoming federal highway transportation bill, which will be reauthorized in September of two thousand and nine. The delegation consisted of myself, Mayor Pro Tem Mark Rosen, Assistant City Manager Les Jones, Public Works Director Keith Jones, Assistant to the City Manager Maria Stipe, and Sante Esposito, and Michael Esposito, a federal advocates. During the visit, the group met with Congressman Ed Royce, we met with House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Chairman James Oberstar and his staff, we met with the staff of Loretta Sanchez, Congresswoman Sanchez, Senate Committee on Environment and Public Works staff, and at each meeting, we presented a briefing on our request for seventy-eight million dollar project proposal for transportation on the Harbor Boulevard. We actually heard from several people that we're the first ones there, nobody else has even started contacting them and trying to get the money, so it sounded like a good sign. At this point, from now on, over the next several months, the city staff will continue working with federal advocates to position the city for funding, but I know, we talked about this not too long ago, everybody here really understands that, you know, when you request money, when you send a letter, when you send a grant request, it doesn't matter what it is, it's very impersonal, and there are times that you really have to sit down and talk face-to-face and meet with people, because that does have more of a lasting impression. And in the past, it's been successful, and we think, or we hope, that in the future it will be as successful or even more successful. One other thing that I wanted to mention before ending tonight's meeting is, I'd like to turn your attention to the city's current economic situation. It's common knowledge that Orange County, like the rest of the state, is feeling the effects of a difficult economy, and I can tell you, in spite of facing the same downturns as the rest of the state, Garden Grove's done its homework and knows where to focus its efforts. Keeping in mind that one percent of every consumer dollar spent goes to city services such as police and fire, sales taxes definitely one huge area of focus. Simply put, we need to keep Garden Grove's tax base as healthy as possible by buying locally. In all honesty, there's really no need to go out of Garden Grove for most of the things that we use on a daily basis. If you like going to popular restaurants, we have some that have been here a few years, some that have been here a long time, and some that are fairly new, but you can get any kind of cuisine you want in Garden Grove. If you need to shop for clothes and other goods, we have Target, Mervyn's, Costco, and if you're interested in buying a car, and you can probably get some pretty good deals now, we have, on Trask Avenue, we have our own auto row, really, and if you keep the money in Garden Grove, it does help all of us. And when you're getting those checks, and I haven't gotten mine yet because my last two numbers in my social security number are pretty high, but when you get those checks, spend them in Garden Grove, help your own economy, help our economy, and let's keep people in jobs. I wasn't going to mention birthdays, yes, Mr. Fratell?
Before you end, I want more, the item six H having to do with the contract for the attorney firm, it was mentioned that if you're willing to approve that without the CPI, that they could go forward with that, if that's acceptable to the council. Now we can take care of it.
Okay, I'll vote we approve it. Second, well, can we have a motion in a second on that item? Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
So anyway, I'd like to say happy birthday to my grandson, whose today is his birthday, and you're all looking at me and saying, you don't look old enough to be a grandfather. Oh, come on, okay, and also, my, one of my son's fiancee, Carly, today's her birthday too, so happy birthday to both of them, and I'll adjourn the meeting until the June twenty-fourth meeting. Thank you.